I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a moment of silence, please? Counselor Chamberlain.
Here.
Counselor Heising.
Here.
Counselor Schneider.
Here.
Counsel President Steers.
Here.
Counselor Tiarina.
Here.
We have five members present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Counsel has had a little bit of time to review the prior meetings minutes as we've had a couple changes in them. I just need a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion, since Harold's not here.
I'll second.
Thank you, Corinne.
Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes moved by Counselor Tiarina and seconded by Counselor Heising. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye, thank you. And next, we do have someone wishing to address counsel. We have Kevin Canera from the Wasean Homecoming Committee with all of his Wasean Homecoming Committee friends, and they would like to give a donation to our parks, Wasean Parks and Recs. So if you guys want to come up, that would be great. Matt, all of you?
Where do you want us to go?
Just make a nice half circle, you can turn around and face the camera if you'd like.
You want me to move on down the front way?
Yeah.
All people in the room.
You get up here.
No, you gotta go to the left.
You gotta get up here, you gotta make sure the girls can be seen.
All right, go ahead.
All right, we'd like to make a donation of the Wasean Parks and Recs to the Wasean Parks Association, so they can focus on giving money to the kids, for the kids. That's what the homecoming is all about. So Matt?
Thank you so much, thank you, Siria. Thank you so much.
I'd just like to thank all of you for volunteering, because right now you just can't get volunteers, and you guys are amazing to keep the homecoming going, so thank you all for doing that.
Thank you so much.
Kevin? I'd like you to stay up here just a second. You are in trouble. Before you guys leave, we have another presentation up here.
Mayor, thank you, counsel. Before Kevin gets to leave, I want to kind of mess up the agenda and go before it was my turn, but I wanted to give you all a chance to give recognition to Kevin. At the end of this year, he is retiring from law enforcement service of over three decades of law enforcement service. Some highlights from his last time while he was here. He got hired back to our auxiliary in 2009 after spending some time between the sheriff's office and our office beforehand. 2011, he became a part-time officer for our department. 2014, he became auxiliary sergeant. 2015, auxiliary lieutenant, and then in 2018, became the chief of the auxiliary, which he's still serving on today. So he's also worked dispatch for us, part-time dispatch, covering shifts for us. He's also was a property room officer, taking care of our property room. In 2019, he was our officer of the year for the Wasean Police Department. So unfortunately, our plaque didn't get done in time for me to give to you, but we will do that another time, but I just want to say thank you, Kevin, and I wanted the counsel to know how much we appreciate you.
Over thirty years, wow. You just don't hear that anymore, so that's amazing. Thank you, Kevin. You've done a lot for Wasean, and you will be missed. Okay, moving on to the agenda. We have department head reports, and again, before we start with Chief Kessler, I do want to read a letter that he received, and then he's gonna give a little bit more insight to this. But it says, "Dear Chief Kessler, you and your fellow heroic citizens have been nominated by your peers to receive the American Legion Department of Ohio's Department Commander's Appreciation Award. This letter should serve as notification that you have been selected as a 2022 recipient. This award is a recognition for your heroic action on August 2, 2022, resulting in the survival of Ms. Michaela Parker. Department Commander Charles Stennis," I hope I pronounced that correctly, "extends a cordial invitation for you to attend our mid-winner awards banquet on Saturday, January 21, 2023, so the American Legion Department of Ohio may present you with the prestigious award." The banquet will be held in Columbus, I don't need to tell you all of that, but it just says, "We would greatly appreciate your consideration of this invitation on behalf of the American Legion of Ohio members, and congratulations on being selected to receive the American Legion Department of Ohio's Department Commander's Appreciation Award." And it's John Robinson, Department adjutant. And before we move forward, Phil is gonna explain a little bit about this incident, which it just wasn't our Wasean fire, there were quite a few people involved in this rescue. So Phil?
So this was August 2nd, it was a normal Sunday morning, nice beautiful morning, and we were dispatched to a car accident. At the same time we were being dispatched, there were several citizens that were going about their normal Sunday morning. Mike Reesucker and Ben Johnston, both city employees, who were off, not at work because it was Sunday morning. Jason and Katie Wanmaker, Tyler Burnett, along with Deputy Justin Galbraith, Deputy Brian Marvin, and Deputy Craig Bailey. Those three were working. They responded to the crash at the same time we did, however, the civilians got there first as the deputies arrived, and then myself and our crews. The important thing about this to us is this isn't just a fire department award, it's these people right here made the difference in saving Ms. Parker that morning. So we just wanted to make sure that that was out to the community, that this was a group team effort by all. Somebody local in the Legion nominated and made it to Columbus, the commander down there saw the article, and that's how everybody else got invited, so that'll be in January.
And to everyone else who was named on that, because that was quite an ordeal, thank you. All right, anything else you would like to report?
We're scheduling multiple trainings for 2023. Several trailers will be up from the Ohio Fire Academy, whether it's the grain bin rescue trailer, the burn trailer, it's the flashover trailer, so 2023 is starting to become full. Earlier this month, each shift participated in some walkthroughs at the water treatment plant with Lou Turow. That was a great experience for them, as they recently got their confined space equipment to go with their confined space training they got this summer. And it's opened up some opportunity there to work with Lou and his staff to do some PM work on some equipment while utilizing our training to assist them. And then this Saturday, and I don't want to spoil it all for Kevin, but we'll be helping with Christmas for Kids this Saturday, so that's all I got.
Any questions? Chief?
Yes, we're getting ready for Christmas for Kids this Saturday. It'll be quite a program. We got fifty kids signed up and ready to go, and through all the awesome donations we got this year, we're able to up that amount to $125 per kid. Just due in part to all the donations from the community and everybody that was willing to put in for that, kind of stretch it out the dollar a little bit more, since inflation and everything has hit everywhere, so that's really exciting for that to be dug for us, and we'll be lining it up, going down Ocky Street with our lights and sirens on, and hopefully giving the kids a good time to remember.
Any questions? It's always exciting. Keith?
Just working on end of year wrap-up on all our projects, working on finalizing our things on the budget. You will notice on your agenda, Resolution 2022-35 for agreements for engineering services, instead of going through the list of them again, we have two more engineers that requested to put in qualifications, that's JDI and TD engineering groups. So those are the two that will be on this go-around. I think that's it, unless people have questions.
Any questions for Keith? Jamie?
Same thing, working on the end of the year and stuff. You guys should have all received the draft budget for the finance committee scheduled on Thursday. Also been finalizing all of our insurances, so you'll see a resolution for the Ohio Plan renewal, as well as the medical insurance and ancillary insurance carriers. We do need to make one change to Resolution 22-33. Our staff loss carrier has changed, so instead of Berkshire Hathaway, it will be Tokyo Marine HCC. So that was something that just came in tonight. And that's all I have.
Just a change of...
From a name? Yeah, from Berkshire Hathaway to Tokyo Marine HCC.
HCC, oh, great. Any questions for Jamie? Tom?
Not really much to report. Been trying to meet with each of the department heads at the end of the year to catch up on stuff that's outstanding, and looking forward for things to do for the next year. Still gotta set up a tie-to-me with Keith, but last but not least, we'll be calling you to set up a tie-to-me to catch up. I know we got some projects, we're working on projects for each of the department heads, and appreciate their time and the chance to work with them, and looking forward to wrapping up this year.
Oh, boy. Any questions for Tom? All right.
Oh, it's trails out there at the park are really nice this time of year. You see some deer, some owls, if you have a chance to get out there and walk or run.
Butterflies are gone.
Butterflies are gone, yeah.
When are those sculptures gonna be in place? Do we know that?
Waiting on the weather. It got too cold to pour concrete before we got a chance to put them in, so...
The snow in October, you mean?
Yes.
So we might see those in the spring?
Yes. As soon as it warms up where we can pour, and we have a solid foundation, then we'll get those installed.
That's exciting. Okay, and we're gonna start our business. Kevin asked me when you guys could leave. I'm just letting you know, Kevin. Not telling you you have to leave, but he says, "Do we have to stay for the whole meeting?" Thank you all for coming.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to committee reports, we have personnel, and did everyone get an updated personnel committee report? Minutes?
Thanks.
All right.
First off, you know, I don't think the amount was ever shared as to what the donation was from the Wasean Committee.
Oh, ten thousand.
Ten thousand. I wanted to make sure that the public knew that was very generous.
Oh, they never said what it was for, did he say?
Yeah.
They had a big check.
Oh.
Did it.
Ten thousand.
Yeah, ten thousand, so it was a very generous gift from the Wasean Homecoming Committee.
Yes, it was.
Thank them for their assistance in funding the Parks and Recs program. Personnel Committee, Mayor, thank you. We did have a meeting most recently on November 23 over lunch, it was well-attended, must've been hot topic. Tom McWaters, John Roof, Phil Kessler, Sarah Wheeler, and Brooke Baumgartner was in charge of taking minutes that day. Sarah and myself, we were here, right? Do we have Harold with us?
Harold was there that day.
Yeah, it was Harold.
No, no, he wasn't. It says he's on the present and the absent list.
Yeah.
He was absent.
Harold was there.
He was there? Okay. He's on the absent and the present list.
Yeah, all three of us were there. Yeah, we were all there.
He was here and in spirit.
All three of us were here. But yeah, we were talking about payroll vendor. Sarah Wheeler was in charge of payroll within the city and human resource also. She presented us with four different payroll vendor options, and the committee was sort of engaged in conversations about which one would be best for the city, each one having its pros and cons, each one coming with a different price tag. At the end of the day, the committee decided to bring all four of those options before council as a whole during a Monday night meeting where we all six would have more discussion about which vendor would be best. So that is the recommendation that came out of Personnel Committee, was to move the payroll vendor discussion forward for discussion as an entire body. The recommendation does include for us to have that conversation in January, so that Councilman Stickley could be present, since he's out of town for a bit. So Mayor, that is a recommendation for council tonight. The other topic that we discussed, Councilman Stickley asked, well, actually brought up the topic of vacation days for part-time employees. There was a discussion within the committee about that topic. Sarah Wheeler suggested that we might engage the part-time staff, because it is a very small group.
I think maybe four employees or so?
As to what they would prefer, because their schedule does come with a sense of flexibility that I think they might enjoy, more so than vacation days. So there was no recommendation in regards to vacation days for part-time employees. Mayor, there was just good discussion.
Okay, sounds good. The paylast, the paylastity, the discussion on the first item, are you asking to table till January, or just bring it back in January for all six, just so it's clear how we're gonna do it?
Exactly. The recommendation tonight that we'll be voting on is to have a discussion about all four vendors at the first meeting in 2023.
Okay, got it. Thank you so much.
No problem. Sort of getting it out of committee, and just before the entire body.
Okay. And then that will be the recommendation back?
Yeah, I would make a motion to accept the Personnel Committee's recommendation in regards to payroll vendors.
I will second that. Motion to bring all four payroll vendors to council on the first meeting in 2023, so all council members can be present, moved by Counselor Chamberlain and seconded by Counselor Heising. Any more discussion?
I'm in your space. Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's, motion carries.
Thank you. Utility?
That would be me. We held a meeting on November 30 via conference call with Matt Nelson and his business partner, Mike Callahan, and they are developers, I believe, based in Elgin, Illinois, is what we were told. They have properties in several states, but they run Dover Glen, and they have rezoned 25 acres close to Dover Glen, and they're interested in tapping into the line that runs down 108. Keith Torbett has met with them and discussed in length all the different legal boundaries and all of those things. Some of those things were new to us, we weren't really aware of what the, you know, language in the document was with the agreement with the county, so he educated us on that, which was very helpful. So he brought us up to speed on the intentions for the line that runs down 108 being, first, to supply water to the fairgrounds, and then to encourage economic growth along 108, secondly. They are interested in, well, they were originally interested in adding both developments to the line, and we discussed if that was possible, and what that might do as far as capacity and the problems that that might bring up. So first of all, the legal issue of, they have to be within 300 feet of that center line of 108. And then the other issue was, could we handle adding all of that? And what we were, what Keith told us, basically, if all of the storm runoff is included in all that for all the existing properties and the new development, that there are times when the capacity is such that it may not be a good idea to add that many. So they were interested, the developers were interested in, is there a plan B for them to be able to tap in? And the plan B would be, leave the existing Dover Glen alone and add the new development in, if it falls within the legal boundaries, which it may or may not, that was kind of a future discussion, but if they could separate the storm and the sewer, and so that the storm water would not be included in all the water that we'd be taking in. So that was kind of a compromise that is a plan B option for them, that they would be able to use that line. So we did not have any action, they seemed like that was something that they were interested in, and they are going to work on the engineering portion of it to make sure that those lines would be separated, and get us information about the flow rates, so that it would be acceptable in that way. Did I miss anything?
No.
Okay.
Pretty much everything.
Thank you.
I do have a question, only because it's right on the line there of Dover, part of it's gonna be in Dover, part of it will be in Clinton. The new part, I'm assuming, is Clinton Township, correct?
Yes.
So Clinton Township is the one that wants to tie in. Their business, but that will be Clinton Township tying in, not Dover.
Right.
All right. That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, and I think we also talked about, you know, because they wanted to put in like seventy-five to eighty new spots, and so that would totally exceed the 300 feet, and so we brought up the idea of maybe reaching out to Clinton and figuring out if it's gonna be extended, if not, so...
Right. It's just which township we're gonna be dealing with, in fact, after they do the study.
Right.
There was no action taken at this time, but they will, they are planning to get that all in line, and they asked for engineering recommendations and that sort of thing, so it will be coming, I think, in the future.
The land that they want to develop, isn't a lagoon there? The other side uses?
Yes.
So how would that possibly, everybody would have to be...
Good question.
Those are our questions.
That was my biggest question, that's why I wanted to see the engineering studies and how they were going to handle that, because the property they're looking to develop is the property they're currently using for, at least a portion of it, they're currently using for their livelihood.
All righty. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's all we have for committee reports. So let's move on to resolutions. First reading of the resolutions. We have Resolution 2022-31, and it is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for a countywide emergency management agency pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code section by 502, and declaring an emergency.
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead.
I'll second it.
Motion to place Resolution 2022-31 on emergency reading, moved by Counselor Schneider and seconded by Counsel President Steers. Any discussion? Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's, motion carries.
Final passage, I think?
I'll second.
I'll second that.
Y'all mumble over here, someone speak up.
Motion to place Resolution 2022-31 on final reading, and the final reading be passed moved by Counselor Chamberlain and seconded by Counselor Tiarina. Any discussion? Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's, motion carries.
Okay, Resolution 2022-32, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Ohio Plan Risk Management and Corporate Work Casualty Liability Fire and Property Damage Insurance, and declaring an emergency.
Sure, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Sounds good to me. Motion to place Resolution 2022-32 on emergency reading, moved by Counselor Chamberlain and seconded by Counselor Heising. Any discussion? Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's, motion carries.
Final.
I'll second that.
Motion to place Resolution 2022-32 on final reading, and the final reading be passed moved by Counselor Schneider and seconded by Counselor Tiarina. Any discussion? Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's, motion carries.
Okay. Resolution 2022-33 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for health insurance coverage with Pareto Captive Services, Lucian Health Services, and Tokyo Marine HDC. And this needs to be passed under emergency.
I think I want to get insurance from Tokyo Marine.
I'll make it.
I'll second. Motion to place Resolution 2022-33 on emergency reading, moved by Counselor Tiarina and seconded by Counselor Heising. Any discussion? Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's, motion carries.
Okay. Resolution 2022-33 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the State Department of Health Insurance and Voluntary Dental and Vision Insurance for full-time employees, and declaring an emergency.
I will move.
Second.
Motion to place Resolution 2022-34 on final reading, and the final reading be passed moved by Counselor Heising and seconded by Counselor Tiarina. Any discussion? Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's, motion carries.
Is that the final?
So many emergencies, I'll final that one.
I'll second final it.
All right, there you go.
Motion to place Resolution 2022-33 on final reading, and the final reading be passed moved by Counselor Chamberlain and seconded by Counselor Heising. Any discussion? Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor, Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's, motion carries.
Gotta love those end-of-year quotes. Resolution 2022-34 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the standard to provide life insurance and voluntary dental and vision insurance for full-time employees, and declaring an emergency.
I will move.
Second.
Motion to place Resolution 2022-34 on emergency reading, moved by Counselor Heising and seconded by Counselor Schneider. Any discussion? Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's, motion carries. I'll final that one.
I'll second.
Motion to place Resolution 2022-34 on final reading, and the final reading be passed moved by Counselor Heising and seconded by Counselor Tiarina. Any discussion? Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's, motion carries.
Okay, we're waiting on the Resolution 2022-35, this needs to be moved on emergency.
I don't think that's an emergency, right, Keith?
It doesn't need to be, it can be passed, it will need to be passed on emergency next meeting, though.
For the end of the year?
So it takes effect by January 1. There'll be...
Can't get suspended.
Yeah, this one, waste your afternoon.
I got my arm ready.
Just do a first reading on it.
Okay, first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreements for engineering services for JDI and TD Engineering. First reading.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion to place Resolution 2022-35 on first reading, moved by Counselor Heising and seconded by Counselor Tiarina. seconded by Council Tiarina. Any discussion? Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Tiarina?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Steers?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Okay, we have nothing under second, but we'll move on to third reading.
Well, did we do the final on that?
No. We just, we did a first reading on it. Yeah, does that make you change your vote?
Yeah, actually.
I'm backing out. I'm going to give that more thought.
Go back to discussion.
Oh, my goodness. Resolution 2022-28 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement for indigent defense services in county court with the Fulton County Commissioners.
I'll make that motion.
Third. That's a third reading.
Second.
Motion to place Resolution 2022-28 on final reading, and the final reading be passed, moved by Council Tiarina and seconded by Council Chamberlain. Any discussion? Council Tiarina?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Steers?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Great. Okay, we already did the Fire Department, two Public Works employees for the award under New Business. The only thing I wanted to add under New Business is that we had the first Welcome to Bethlehem held out on Enterprise at the Outreach. About 400 to 450 people showed up last night. It was a huge success. It was cold, but it was beautiful. And looking forward to next Sunday and before our next council meeting, the ice sculpting will be on the 17th and 18th downtown Wasean. So that's another thing if you guys can get out to try that. Cindy Lou Who and the Grinch will be there. So I thought it'd be Brandon.
Is all of that, is all of that information on the city website?
It is, yes.
Facebook page?
Yes. We've been trying to promote as much as we can. The Christmas at the Cabin is that same weekend. The historical site, is that correct? And there was another thing too. Oh, Santa at the Depot, and that's on there. That would be the week before Christmas. And I'd tell you who's doing that, but then I give away Santa, so.
I tell you what, the candy baskets that are, you know, during the summer are flower baskets, you know, the planners, those are super cute.
Jake and Becky and Bart. They did all of that. They called and asked if it would be okay if they used them to decorate. We're like, yes. And they did it. They had some stolen, and they were very generous and gave them back. So that was really nice.
And those are, those are pool noodles.
Yeah, they are.
Pool noodles wrapped in the colors and then just a little piping and in they go. And they're, it's so neat. Cellophane, who knew? But yeah, I'm so grateful for that. That's just amazing what they've done down there. And they're very active with downtown, so kudos to them. And he was here.
He was.
All righty. Anything else on the new business before we move to old business? Nope. Okay. We will need a motion to approve the bills.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Motion to approve and pay the bills as presented, moved by Council Schneider and seconded by Council President Steers. Any discussion?
Hey, Jamie, do you think we're going to set a record and eclipse the $5 million mark for revenue this year?
I'm close to my fingers.
It's going to be close, isn't it?
I would pay a $300,000 more. And we did that the past few years in December, so it'd be interesting.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Steers?
Yes.
Council Tiarina?
Yeah.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Pay the bills.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries.
I could add, you can tell Trish thank you. Yes, you're doing a great job on that. Okay, I am asking to move into executive session. I need a motion for employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of public employee official.
Move.
I'll second the idea.
Slow on the second.
I'm gun shy now.
Pull it back, hurry up.
Motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official move by Council Heising and seconded by Council Chamberlain. Any discussion? Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Tiarina?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Steers?
Yes.